Seventh, and the meeting is officially called to order. As usual, we will start with our chaplain prayer and pledges. And today, we're honored to have Ralph Dawkins, our police department chaplain, to lead us in prayer as well as in pledges. Please stand.
Good morning. Let us pray. Father, thank you for the opportunity to invoke your word through prayer into this gathering of city officials, leaders, and concerned citizens. Lord, your word declares that we should acknowledge you in all of our ways, and you would direct our paths. And then you said, if we delight ourselves in you, you would give us the desires of our heart. As a father, I pray that you would give these servant leaders knowledge, wisdom, and courage on how to deal with the community, the family, and the facilities and businesses, and any other problems and issues facing our city and its people. We ask your blessings upon the people who have been called to lead this community in which we live, work, and pray. I ask that you would give them a mighty visit today, that you would come into this room and cause them to have a productive meeting, lead each and every one of them to make fruitful contributions to lead on every and deal with every agenda on the item. I pray that you would give them wisdom, directions, and instructions on how to lead and manage and operate the city and its departments. You said that we should pray for those that are in authority. And so I pray for the mayor, her staff and assistants, the city council members, the city manager, and every person and department that is instrumental in leading and directing our city. I pray for the police chief and the entire police force, the sheriff's department, and all of those that protect and serve the residents of our city. I pray for the fire chief and the departments and all the first responders who serve. And lastly, I pray that you would bless our city with economic prosperity, that you would cause it to draw in and attract to our city businesses, industries, and corporations that will produce jobs and revenue, and help it to grow and prosper. In Jesus' name, amen. Let's do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Today, we have one proclamation, which is the National Small Business Development Center, SBDC. Do we have individuals in the audience to receive this? Okay, we'll read it. The National Small Business Development Center SBDC program was legislated via the Small Business Act of 1976 as a program of the U.S. Small Business Administration. State and local governments play a vital role as key partners to leverage resources which complements the SBDC's economic and business development efforts. The Texas SBDCs have provided a small business assistance to starting and growing Texas's small business since inception. As small business owners navigate an ever-changing landscape, SBDCs continue to support and elevate their clients through innovative training programs and advising strategies. In 2022, Texas SBDCs assisted entrepreneurs with continued disaster recovery efforts, and with the other SBDCs, and the Texas Southwest SBDC Network has facilitated over 168 million in disaster-related capital since March 2020. Working with its economic development partners, the Angelo State University Small Business Development Center continues to demonstrate its service, hard work, and continued commitment that has helped small businesses in San Angelo and the surrounding nine-county area to recover, rebuild, and prosper. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim March 15th as Texas SBDC Day, Texas Small Business Development Center Day, and wish the Texas Southwest SBDC Network on this national SBDC Day continued success in the future. And witness whereof, I have here on two, set my hand, and have caused the official seal of the city of San Angelo to be affixed this 7th day of March 2023. How are you today? Let's have a picture. We will move into the public comment section of the agenda. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address, or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Do we have individuals in the audience who would like to come forward and offer public comment? If you please, we'll do so.
Good morning, Anna Mayor and City Council. My name is John Watchkin. I am the commander of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, Fort Contra post 1815, right here in San Angelo, Texas. I've been the commander since June, took the seat in July, in this process. Since then, we've done quite a few renovations to the inside of the building. This is Friday, we did renovations to the outside and inside from Home Depot, and they we got a grant from Home Depot Foundation. What I'm getting to is we're making progress to different things that haven't been done in the past. My concern right now is to let people know where the VFW is. I keep saying, I don't, there's no sign, I can't see it. Oh, I went right by it, and I didn't see it because of the location on the corner of Browning and Harris Street. There's the railroad crossing, and there's three residential properties that corner the other side. The sign right now that's affixed, I've been told by City Hall, that the site is in illegal position. What I'm asking is, they couldn't give me an answer where I can put this sign. I asked about residential properties. I got a yes back in August, when I went first down there. I waited for one of the residents to get an okay from them, and I had an okay from the other resident on the corner. Now, because of the location, I am baffled and do not know where I can put this sign so we can tell the community, our veterans, veterans' families, where this, where the VFW is on the corner. I need suggestions, and I open it to you all, please.
Has city staff gone out to the property and met with you physically on the property, help you with that?
No, ma'am. I've asked for it, and they said that we can't do that.
Shane, could you meet with this gentleman here as soon as he walks away and kind of talk about that and see what we can arrange that?
Shane? Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, that's in my district, so let me follow up with John. I have visited with him on other issues, and so between John James and the commander, I'll get a resolution.
Shane, I guess, because, yeah, all right. With that, further public comment, please? Please come forward.
I'm Dorothy Helscher, single-member District One, and I'm on the consent agenda, not the regular agenda. Is this the appropriate time to speak?
Are you here on Cox Lane?
Yes.
I need some ruling on that. It will be pulled, and when you, when we pull it and address it, then you can come back. How about that?
Fine, thank you.
Further public comment?
Good morning. Am I good? My name is Sarah Negavetich. I live at 3310 Cumberland Drive, and today I have the honor of representing Contra Valley Community Action Agency. First, I just want to take a moment and thank the congresspeople who showed our, Congress City Council members, who showed up and volunteered at the recent warming shelter that was put on by the city. We appreciate so much your willingness to come out and share your servant heart with the city, and also to learn more about the people that we share the city with. To that point, recently, we've sent each of you an invitation to attend a Bridge Builders' event. And if you have not received that yet, I have additional copies I'm happy to share with you. I just wanted to share a little bit more information about this event with you to make sure that you understand how important this event is for our city and for each of you. That morning, we're going to have trained facilitators who are meeting with your constituents, the people who live right here in San Angelo, representing all different kinds of walks of life, different socioeconomic statuses, all across the board, so that they can share what they want from their city. They're sharing their needs, their wants, their frustrations, but also the things that they love about San Angelo. And all of this is so that we can better inform you and other elected officials here in the city, so that you can make decisions based on the true needs and wants of your community. That evening, we're going to be having each of you there on Saturday, May 25th, I'm sorry, March 25th, at 5:00 p.m. as a chance for you to meet just with those trained facilitators so that they can digest all of that information that they learned that morning and pass it on to each of you. Again, just as an opportunity to learn, share, and grow, and learn more about our citizens here, what they love about our city, what makes it such a wonderful place to live, and how together we can all make it better. So I hope that each of you have this event marked on your calendars, that you're making arrangements to be there. If not, I hope that you're continuing to spread the word to other elected officials and important citizens here in our city, so that we can all come together and take advantage of this really unique and wonderful event.
Further public comment? Seeing none, we will close the public comment section of the agenda, and we will move into the consent agenda. Larry, do you have an item that you'd like to pull? Karen? E. E. Lucy?
No, ma'am.
I'll pull item C. Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
No, ma'am.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of items C and items E?
Move.
So moved by Karen, seconded by Harry. Any public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of items C and item E, please say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, the motion passes, or the consent agenda passes seven to zero with the exception of C and E. Because we have some folks here in the audience on Cox Lane, let's go to item E first. Second reading of a reconsideration of an ordinance approving the abandonment of approximately 4,060 feet of the right-of-way of Cox Lane, beginning near 1861 Cox Lane and extending 2,330 feet to the west, then 1,730 feet south, ending approximately 320 feet north of the intersection of Sunset Drive and Foster Road. Karen, you want to start the conversation? You pulled it.
I defer to Mrs. Helscher.
We welcome you to speak.
Dorothy Helscher, single-member District One. Thank you for your time and the city resources that you have dedicated to this proposal to abandon Cox Lane. I understand the basics of the proposal, I believe. It would eliminate an awkward 90-degree turn on Cox Lane. It would eliminate maintenance of parallel roads, establish a more convenient path to Sunset, Loop 306, and Bryant Boulevard, and increase future revenues for the city in the form of taxes on the houses and structures that would be built on the now vacant pasture. I understand that clearing has begun on the privately-owned land just north of the 90-degree turn, and that the flow of drainage water from even one-fourth inch of rain that previously affected Capitol Heights may begin to be alleviated. We appreciate that. I understand the city has established traffic counts on at least two occasions on Cox and Foster. I believe the last count showed a total number of vehicles traveling east and west. On Cox was reported at 2,682, traveling north and south on Cox to be 2,849, and the number of vehicles on Parkview at 181. I do not know the time period involved, the day the counts were taken, or the types of vehicles counted. I heard Mr. James say his staff does not think the flow of traffic on Parkview would be adversely affected. I heard, however, I do remember the remark that with improved roads will come increased traffic counts. Currently, Sunset is an option for vehicles to take once they exit Cox, because there are no stop signs stopping the flow of traffic from Cox to Knickerbocker. However, if the abandonment occurs and Cox empties at Parkview, the route through Capitol Heights will take vehicles to YMCA Drive and thus avoid the school-crossing speed limit on Sunset, which of course occurs in the morning and the afternoon. This route would become a shortcut that would greatly increase traffic through the neighborhood. It would be the easier route when the school zone is in effect. As Mr. James said February 21, some cars would take the route through the neighborhood streets, and with improved roads, the traffic counts would increase. And as Mayor Gunter stated, neighborhoods are important. Traffic counts affect neighborhoods. Mr. James also spoke of eliminating maintenance for two roads that are literally a few feet apart. However, the issue of controlling the flow of water in Foster, at Parkview and Foster, would pose another concern for safety during rain events. The flow there is already many inches and sometimes feet deep. One Parkview homeowner spoke of how he floated the Foster in kayaks and inner tubes when he was in college. The increased flow resulting from the reduction of the elevation gradient between the pasture land and Foster would increase, would pose new concerns, meaning more water. The picture shown at the last council meeting showed guardrail damage at the 90-degree turn on Cox. As one resident stated earlier, if drivers can't see the warning signs leading up to the turn and take heed, how will they see my kids playing in the front yard? I believe the proposal by Cox Property Development has a recommendation that after approval of the new plat and payment, the city issue a quitclaim deed to the purchase of the abandoned portion of Cox Lane that abuts those properties. I believe the purchase of that one half of Cox will have to, I believe the purchaser of that one half of Cox will have to pay for a new survey, file and pay for a plat, pay fair market value for the land that has been abandoned. Currently, the lots in the Trails subdivision range in price and value, according to the tax records, from $17,500 to $38,350. The cost of a survey and filing fee for a plat is about $1,500. Plus, if the homeowner buys the property, they're looking at the fees I just mentioned, and also perhaps a new privacy fence and landscaping. I hope the residents of the Trails who would be affected are aware of these stipulations and start planning for it. Mr. Hebert claimed that the council is being, what the council is being asked to do is vote on whether or not to abandon two sections of Cox. That the vote did not include any design, that the drawings are conceptual and would depend on future steps from many departments in the city totally separate from the vote on abandonment. That the council may or may not have a say in the ultimate design, because if it meets current subdivision ordinances according to state law, the council must accept the plan. Mayor Gunter noted that no one has been shown what a potential development might look like. However, with all these considerations, you must know that this vote is the first vote that will allow a cascading event. In other words, it's like a row of dominos. When the first one falls, it strikes another, and another, and another until the row is exhausted. So even though this vote is only on abandonment, which you will consider, I suppose, in the future, it is far more than that. It may be a hard line, as Mayor Gunter said, but once that line is crossed, there's no going back. I have no knowledge of coefficients or formulas to determine runoff. I can hardly visualize 37.78 acre-feet of water in a 100-year event occurring on the proposed site. I can say with certainty that's a great deal of water rushing to a common drainage point, even with the detention pond holding 10 acre-feet of water. The drainage from Capitol Heights will not drain to the southeast, and thus to the detention pond. The 10-acre detention pond has no effect on Capitol Heights. Mayor Gunter emphasized that the development will not increase the city's existing problems, but the elevation reduction between Cox and Parkview can only increase the flow of water because of the increased length of the roadway that must slope toward Parkview, and then the water drain to the north.
You're going to have to wrap it up. Your time limit is up.
Okay, I will. Hillary Buehler was asked if she could explain why the LLC was proposing doing what mattered to the homeowners. I guess I missed that. Mayor Gunter asked for a more complete picture of what Cox Property Development and Dorado had in mind. Perhaps it was presented, but again, I missed it. I saw some charts about rain and some conceptual ideas. I asked this council to please reconsider and think hard about this idea and save our neighborhood. I appreciate your time more than you can know. Thank you.
Very much. Any further public comment?
Anna Bartosz, single-member District One. I don't know, Mr. Hebert, have you contacted the businesses that are on Cox Lane and what they're, I've not heard any kind of situation, any kind of comments as to their answer to this, because there are businesses now on Cox Lane and warehouses for sure that are storage facilities. So what do they say as far as access to their buildings they have? There are five of them there right now, and probably room for more.
I haven't heard from none of them.
You've not, have you contacted them?
Not contacted them, nor did I hear from any of them throughout this entire process.
Do they know that their access won't be limited now to their business? I don't know. That's a question that I've not heard addressed, and I didn't know if it had been or not. And thank you so much.
Anna, further public comment? All right, with that, may I have a motion for approval of item E?
So move.
So moved by Harry, a second by Tom. And with that, because we've already had public comment, but I will ask one more time for public comment since we did public comment first. All right, so seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor of approving item E, please say aye. I will start with Larry. Name? Karen?
Aye.
Lucy?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Tommy?
Aye.
Mayor Gunter?
Aye.
Motion passes four to three. We will now, I mean, what did I do? Five to two. Sorry. Thanks. Can't count.
Will we still have some discussion over this, ma'am?
No. Over. We will now move on to item C. Consider ratifying proposed revisions to the COSA DC bylaws as approved by the COSA DC Board. Michael Dane, you're on.
Yes, ma'am. Do you have questions about this item?
I just want reviewed what the changes are. That's all.
Well, in summary, the only change that's proposed has to do with allowing purchasing authority to the director occupying that position. That authority is designed to be consistent with what we would, what we allow directors throughout the city to have. And what that does is that should reduce the number of routine or de minimis-type items that show up on the board agenda and the council agenda.
Thank you. So that's the only change from previous bylaws.
And Brandon's here if you want to go through the details.
No, as long as, I mean, I'm going to say there could be council members who want to go through the details, but primarily it is in line with the same purchasing standards that we use as a city, so they match up, and that after a $50,000 purchase, it must go to city, to the city manager for approval. Is that correct?
It comes to council at 50.
Comes to council, so just to be clear, council would still have a vote, a yea or a nay, on the expenditure?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's just clarification. May I have a motion for approval of item C?
So move.
Tommy, did you say that? Yes, seconded by Lucy. Public comment, please? Seeing none, we will now take a vote. All those in favor of approving item C, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no nays, we will consider item C approved, seven zero. That concludes the consent agenda, so we will move into item C, six, the regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above, and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. We will start today with Charlotte Anderson from Keeps San Angelo Beautiful, making her annual report. Charlotte, you're on.
Charlotte Anderson, I'm the executive director of Keeps San Angelo Beautiful, and we're real excited to bring you our annual report for the work in 2022.
Make sure you're speaking into the microphone, which I have a bad habit of not doing, so just so we pick it up. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. So our mission here is to create awareness and maintain clean, green, and beautiful spaces. Clean is trash pickups, green is recycling, and beautiful spaces through art, science, and education. Our vision is to take action each and every day to support safe neighborhoods, thriving communities, and beautification to impact our economic development of our businesses. Our principles and values are based on our Core Four, which is respect for the individual, to serve our community and our citizens, to strive for excellence and integrity in all endeavors. Next slide, please. All right, let's talk a little trash today. So, "Real Texans Don't Litter," that's our motto, and we like to make sure that the citizens of our community are very aware of that.
How about the people who move from other states to Texas? Are they real Texans, or?
We'll get them to take that pledge real quick.
Okay, good enough.
So we've hosted over 108 events with over 768 volunteers. So we've hosted over 108 events with over 768 volunteers, generating over 2,594 volunteer hours for $77,105 in labor to the community. So we have, we have a few photos here to share with you today. On the top left, we've got our National Junior Honor Society students from the middle school that did a great job on Chadburn. Below that, we have our Don't Mess With Texas Trash Off, which is coming up again this year. Below that, I'm really excited, this year, our fall sweep, we've increased 100%. And we've done that every year for the three years. We started out with 100 volunteers. Our second year, we had 200, and this year, we had over 400 participants registered in that event. So we're real proud of that and we had a great event. And then adjacent at the bottom are our sweet students from Santa Rita Elementary. So we had a presentation, we inducted several junior K-SAV ambassadors, and these three boys, after their presentation and events, they showed up for Earth Day cleanup. So very inspired that we would spend a few days in their school and a month later, they would show up. This was at Lake Nazworthy. And above that are all the students, the third-grade students, there were 60 from Santa Rita Elementary, and that was initiated working on our Trias Institute projects with their classroom and Ms. Weeble's class. And they were here for the Earth Day proclamation last year. So, great job. Next slide, please. Okay. Talk about tires. So, this is real exciting. This year, we did 7,019 tires. So we're over 25 18-wheelers and over 20,000 tires for the two years of tire collection. So we're proud of our teams. It's very, very, it's team building and it's very rewarding. So the people that do this are just incredible. My favorite picture, obviously, is of their hands and their hard work in our gloves. If you haven't rolled and stacked, you haven't lived. So we'll be incorporating another tire event on May 6 with our hazardous waste and would love to have you come out. As you can see, there are some females in these pictures, so this is not just a man's game. We've had a really wonderful time. And again, the team building, the service has really had an impact, and we'll continue our work with the tires. See, next slide, please. All right, hazardous waste. Fantastic time to hazardous waste. We get to that. So we had 115 volunteers, 25 organizations, 538 hours, $15,369 value in one event to the city. We collected 997 pounds of oil, 1,300 pounds of shredded documents, 100 pounds of cardboard, 750 pounds of electronic waste, 10,491 pounds of paints, chemicals, and pesticides. So we are trying to get our message out on the paints because these events are very costly. There are a lot of remedies to paints. Number one, you can just take the lid off and let them dry out. That's really an easy fix. And then if you have a little more paint than you have, you can put an exorbitant in there and also let that dry up and that can go to the landfill. I would also like to visit with Art and Uncommon Places and see if we can't put up a cabinet, a community cabinet. So if you have more than a half a gallon of paint left, we can donate that because we have a lot of artists, a lot of murals going in, and that can save us a lot of money on pay costs. Julia would love it. Yes, I think, and we'd be happy to pay for the cabinet for her in a place that they need on their facility. So I look forward to that conversation. 12,725 plastic bags were collected from Ella, who Saves the Oceans, and she has done over 20,000 plastic bags since we've been working with her. These bags are sent to a church in Merton and the Prayer Shaw Group. They take the plastic bags, they tear them into strips and weave them into, like a vine, and then they make mats for the homeless with that. So definitely 100% of those 20,000 plastic bags, which could be floating around our community, were definitely recycled. We're real excited to continue our work with her. She'll be at our hazardous waste event this year. Next slide, please. There's little Ella right here, and here's Cash. He received his World Conservation Award with our Cub Scouts, and we were able to be a part of that celebration with them. And then, of course, here's our trees. We, we did 200 trees this year for a total of 450 for the past three years, so. Who gets the trees? Where are they? Where are they planted? So we got, we got 200 trees this year granted by the Apache Corporation. 130 of those trees were sent out to our schools. So SAISD maintenance team comes and picks up their lot, and then they plant those on the school campuses. In the past, we've made them available to Angelo State University, Howard College, the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club. 70 of those trees went to the community, and we were real excited about that. Now, this year, we'll put in a grant for 200 trees, and we're hoping to match that grant so we can give more of the trees to our community to enhance our neighborhoods. So Rick, do we need trees?
Yes, and Carl and his staff do a good job of either getting grants for those or getting trees. They've been planting as well. And so, yes, sometimes they will coordinate with this group as well.
We do donate to the city of San Angelo, and they do house the trees, let them grow a little bit stronger, get those trunks a little bit thicker, and then they will plant them so that they will have a better opportunity to live, so.
That's a good point. They put them in their nursery sometimes, get them a little larger than they are when it starts, so they have a better chance, once we put them out in the park or along the river, to get a good, healthy start.
So again, going back to Cash here, we do the Star Spangled Banner Celebration and hand out about 1,500 Keeps San Angelo Beautiful fans, and of course, we hope these people will in turn become volunteers for our program. But we also handed out hundreds of trash bags for that event. So there are a lot of people bringing in, oh my goodness, across the bridge. There's a lot of traffic and a lot of families, but I mean, you walk past a family with 10 boxes of pizza, can we give you two bags? You know, because there's a lot of trash generated at that event, and we're happy to help. And I know we have receptacles from the city that are there, but at least those who are bringing additional trash, once those receptacles are full, at least their trash is in a trash bag and closed up so that it's a little more easier to contain and accessible on the cleanup part. So we're excited about that. Let's see what the next slide has on it. Here we go. Our educational outreach. So our primary outreach is to our elementary schools, and we work with the YMCA After School Program. And we reach probably over 2,000 students a year, and we provide activities and information regarding water conservation and the environment and recycling on Earth Day and America Recycles Day. This is Santa Rita Elementary here, and again, we worked with Ms. Weeble's class, and they're sweet little girls down here in the bottom, Ms. Ella and Ms. McKeska. They started out with just a couple of questions. We just want to ask you a couple of questions about recycling. We're working on our Trias Research Project. And so these girls, you know, they just couldn't wrap their head around, what can we do? What can we do? So they decided that they wanted to become junior K-SAV ambassadors. So we brought materials, we inducted all their kids. They take a pledge to never litter, to recycle when they can, and they get literature. So we provided the T-shirts, and Ms. Ella said she just had to meet the mayor, and she needed to do a proclamation. So we put together a proclamation for them, and they were just thrilled to death, and we really appreciate that. You have no idea how excited they were to be here and to be in front of city council. So I'm just very grateful for that opportunity. And then they went back and we cleaned up on their campus. So that was just really fantastic. So two little girls with two little questions ended up in creating a lot of activity and awareness on their campus. So the cleanup was 60 students, which was all of their third grade as well. We also are on the Angelo State University campus several times a year. We just finished up with the health fair. We say, "Stress Less, Volunteer More." So students sign up at that time for our upcoming events. They need service hours, they need team building. We do have a couple of events right around the corner. We got sign-ups for that. And then we also have a forum called The Voice at the Table, and that is where we discuss everything about Keeps San Angelo Beautiful, our mission, our vision, our programming and events, and again, looking for volunteers. We've also received board members from those events and sponsors, so they're very effective. On Earth Day, we're also with our Angelo State University students as well, providing activities and the opportunity to get more literature and learn about our event. We were also at Ethicon this year, so they have Sustainable September. We provided information on water conservation at one event and then Keeps San Angelo Beautiful at the other event. So our educational efforts are just wonderful. We are on 23 elementary campuses, provided over 4,000 lessons, which included our Boys and Girls Club, our Girl Scouts, and our Cub Scouts. So we're happy to work with them. Let's go to the next slide, please. Here we go, a few of our highlights. So we did earn our Gold Star Affiliate Status with Keep Texas Beautiful this year. I'm very proud of that. So three years in a row, our Governor's Community Achievement Award of Excellence, received that for two years. We just recently submitted our body of work for 2022. And so, I'm not sure how old do, we've increased our score every year, so we're in the 90/90 category. We did a 97.5, so I'm hoping to improve on that grade, and maybe we can get into a first, second, or third place on that category. We are in Category Nine, it's based on population, and the topics that we have to discuss are on leadership, beautification, education, coding compliance, and just an overall general assessment of our community. So I'm really excited this year, so we'll see how that turns out. I'm a mentor for Little Elm, the community is north of Dallas in the Colony, and Brazos. So for Keep Texas Beautiful affiliates, we are a mentor, and then we have a mentor. And my mentor is Chris Lash in Keep McAllen Beautiful. She's a 20-year affiliate and just amazing. Any challenges, questions, things that we need to reach out to, she gives us a lot of support. And we did recently have an article in the Texas Town and City in March of '22 on our tire project. Keep Texas Beautiful judged this year. I'm excited to participate that, to learn and grow our program, and see what other affiliates are doing, and be a part of that process. It's just a training class all on its own. We've been a webinar program. Not a lot of the affiliates do tires, so they're like, tires, oh my God. So for us, it's, it's a wonderful project, and it's really easy to get into. Once you do one, you just want to get three more trucks and three more trucks. So we're excited to help them understand how they can be a part of that process as well. And on the tires, the best part, 100% is recycled. And I wish we had show and tell time, but I have the metals that are stripped out of the tires. I've got the tire crumb, and I have the one-inch squares. So we have, when we do our outreach to our students, we take these items with us so they can touch and feel the process, which builds a better image and hence a greater impact and engagement. So we also participate in webinars, and we recently received a KTB, HEB grant for recycling that we're excited about, and those projects will be coming up. We do a planner for our students, so we hand out about 2,000 of those, and that will come out about Earth Day, and part of that grant will pay for that. Next slide, please. Okay, awareness. So, I'm real excited to partner with KLST. We are now the Coffee Talk sponsor with Dakota Coffee, so very proud of that segment. This is where it comes on 52 weeks a year, and the city gets to send a representative to discuss whatever their topics are. So it could be Fort Concho, it could be Parks and Rec, it could be Keeps San Angelo Beautiful, and it has our logo on there. And then we also, with that sponsorship, they produced a commercial for us, so that runs 52 weeks a year as well. And again, we hoping to continue to grow our volunteer base, sponsors, and donors. In your upper, that would be the left-hand corner, we did have a board retreat. We rolled out the red carpet. We brought in Keep Texas Beautiful to visit with us about updates on recycling. We brought in another affiliate to help us with our strengths and weaknesses, and we had our community partners come and visit with us about the impact of Keeps San Angelo Beautiful to the community. So that was a good time for us. And again, our billboards, we tried to make sure we're pledging to be litter-free, getting our message to the community on our events, and then, of course, our TLCA kids, oh my God, they were incredible. So very engaged group, and we look forward to more groups as well. So, next slide, please. Okay, we're almost done. Beautification. We are really happy to, to recognize some of our community leaders that have passed through a picnic table and benches, along with a plaque and a boulder. So Ms. Norma Jean Gilman, that would be to your right here in the photo. She, she grew up in Wall, and at a young age, she watched her home burn to the ground. In seven days, the community of Wall rebuilt her home. She is a Peace Corps advocate, and she was a teacher for earth science at Central High School. And she has beautiful gardens all over their home and is just a regular at the farmer's market. So we were happy to honor her. I think she also, in this past year, when you did the big event at the Lily Pond, she was there to present the placard, right? So it was great. Just a wonderful, wonderful lady, but she did get sick. So we celebrate her life and all her contributions to our community. I know she picked up trash every single day. If you ever bought a garlic rope at the farmer's market, it was hers. And she farmed all on the side of her property, everywhere, all the way down to the river. But behind us, it's kind of hard to see the picnic table and her boulder and her plaque, but she's watched over by the lady in blue. And her home is actually just on the other side of the river, so her husband can view that from the windows of her home. So anyhow, just a great honor to be able to do that for her. And of course, the amazing Mr. Ken Landen and his work at the Lily Garden. So just a lifelong work. Just can imagine that his family is very proud to know that something is there with his work. So we were very happy to do that. He has a picnic table and a bench that's at the Lily Garden as well, and we'll continue to do that. We also have one for Gregorio Gutierrez, and it is in an area, it's already been installed, the picnic table and the benches, but there's a little construction in that area now. When they finish that, we will get with his family and do a celebration to dedicate his picnic table. And we're working on an art mural. That is just a glimpse, a little bit of pre-work on that, and we'll have more information to come on that, probably in the next 30 days. But we're excited to work with Art and Uncommon Places to have a recycling message as well for the community.
Okay. Great presentation, great presentation and great leadership. Greatly appreciate the projects and the work that you're doing. Truly, we benefit as a city. Do we have anyone who'd like to add, ask a question or add anything to the subject? Okay. With that, thank you, Charlotte.
Okay, thank you, guys. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you, Charlotte. Excellent work. Thank you.
Item B, consider awarding the following items pertaining to the Lake Nazworthy Wastewater System Improvements Project and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. One, consider awarding RFP-WU-03-23 Rebid South Concho A Lift Station to Austin Engineering Company Incorporated in the amount of $5,330,900 based upon scoring criteria as set forth in the Competitive Seal Proposal Procurement Method. Two, consider awarding RFP-WU-0423 Rebid Lake Nazworthy Wastewater System Improvements to McKee Utility Contractors Incorporated for the base bid and alternative bid, Item A, in the amount of $25,999,100 based upon scoring criteria as set forth in the Competitive Seal Proposal Procurement Method. Item Three, consider executing Task Order Number Three in the amount of $1,498,906 for Construction Phase Services and Residential Project Representative Services for Lake Nazworthy Wastewater System Nazworthy Wastewater System Improvements to CDM Smith Incorporated. And then four, amending the fiscal year 2022/23 to budget for debt issuance in the amount of $44,233,920. And Andy, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Andy Vasilio, Assistant Director of Water Utilities. I know this is a day that many of us have been waiting for, and that the proposals for the Lake Nazworthy Sewer Project have come in, and I'll get to it here shortly, but they came in under budget, so we are very happy. First of all, I'd like to go ahead and briefly reintroduce the project to you. I know it's a project that we've been talking about for many years. The general scope of the project, as shown here, has been the same for about two years. There have been minor variations to the alignment, but in general, it stayed the same. Right here, it will be the discharge or the downstream end of the project, where we'll be emptying into an existing 42-inch gravity wastewater main, and that'll run along the Concho River up to and then to about right here. And then from there, it'll cross the old railroad bed, go along South Country Club Road to approximately right here. At that point, and I hope that y'all can see that right there, from there, it'll transition to force main, and it'll go to the South Concho Lift Station, which is located right here. So in general, it's one brand-new lift station with a capacity of 1.5 million gallons per day with future.
How long is that projected? What's the, you say 1.5 million gallons, obviously, that's a lot.
Yes.
But does that mean that'll take care of us for 50 years, for five years, for 100 years? What are we talking about?
Well, what I'll say is, right now, our average daily flow in this area is .1 million gallons per day. Peak wet weather flow is .4. So a lot of it will depend on how quickly things develop, but we have excess capacity for sure. In addition to, we can expand the lift station to 3 million gallons per day by adding another pump.
Right.
And this project also includes a approximately, slightly more than 10 miles of pipeline, both the gravity and the pressure sewer. So here's the project benefits, just as a reminder. First of all, we're increasing the wastewater capacity to the lake area, to the airport area. We have an existing force main that goes under Lake Nazworthy at Knickerbocker. It's an 8-inch. It is not encased, and it's older. So we're replacing that, going a different route, but we're putting two force mains, 12-inch diameter, and they're both encased. So that way, if there's a problem with one of them, we can just pull the carrier pipe out and put a new pipe in through the casing. We're also providing provisions for increased sewer area that are currently unsuared, and we are abandoning four lift stations, which is certainly something good from an operations and maintenance standpoint as well. So a lot of good benefits to this project. So from the contractor selection, we did go to the proposal basis, not just low bid. We had a selection committee of five members, three city employees, two from CDM Smith, the consultant. We reviewed the proposals for the lift station, which is a separate contract. We had one proposal, and that was from Austin Engineering Company at $5.3 million. A good company, they have very good reputation. Obviously, the scoring committee selected them one out of one. The second project is for the pipeline, the Lake Nazworthy Wastewater System Improvements. We had seven proposals that came in for this. We evaluated them both on the price, but also on our qualifications, references, and reputation. The low cost was also the one that we selected, which is McKee Utility Contractors, very good reputation. They've done a lot of work in Texas, and it's slightly under $26 million. Now, that cost includes one of our alternate bids, which is parallel force main, all the way from the lift station to where we transitioned to gravity. So we were actually going more with the project for that $26 million based on that alternate bid item. So looking at both contracts, it'd be $31,330,000 total from a construction standpoint. At this point, I'd like to ask if there's any questions before I...
I certainly like that number.
So do I, Mayor. A lot of us.
Certainly where we wanted it to go, not, 32 million is where we thought we would be, so.
When we originally started, it was 32, so good job.
Excited that the project's going to get done at a price that we can better afford. And then, of course, the question is always, what's the timeline? So when are we going to be able to be able to take advantage of all of this? Are we looking at two years? Are we looking at three years? Are we looking at some will be done and we can use, some can't do anything until it's all done? Give us some timeline.
Sure. The construction contract for the Lake Nazworthy, the pipeline project, is 24 months, so two years. The lift station is 18 months with a six-month delay, because they have to have a certain portion of the pipeline done before they can even start on the lift station. So from the start of the notice to proceed, two years.
And when will the notice to proceed happen?
That would be after the contracting phase, so we'd probably be looking early to midsummer. Just a rough ballpark.
Just repeating, the sooner the better.
Yes, ma'am. We'll agree. So the next portion of this is the Construction Phase Professional Services, and this would be retaining CDM Smith to provide the professional services during the construction phase of the project. It would include both contract administration, construction phase technical assistance, and also include resident project representative, RPR, also known typically as inspections. They will be subcontracting the RPR out to EHT. EHT has worked with the city. They have done, they're currently doing the RPR for the Hickory Well Field Project, very good reputation with the city. They've done an excellent job on Hickory Project. So to have this team come in and help us during the construction phase is very exciting for us. And this is at the, slightly under the $1.5 million figure listed here. And again, we're very excited to be able to bring these folks back on for the construction phase. And this would be task order number three as part of the CDM Smith contract with the city. Any questions on that?
Questions for Andy?
And then the final portion would be a budget amendment, which would be for the debt issuance, and this would be $44,233,920. And this is the debt issuance that has been started in the previous months, based on the estimate from a few months ago. It was, as mentioned before, escalated because of the increase in construction costs that we've been seeing lately throughout, throughout really the world. You know, the supply chain, the worker shortage, been well documented. The cost increase did go up. Thankfully, the bids came in very competitive, really close to our initial estimate. So we're very excited about that.
Questions? Yes, Tom?
How much above that is the lake fund that you're going to pull for this project? Probably around 11?
I think initially it was around 11. I think we have approximately 9 million remaining. So we've already used some of that for the design phase.
And I think that what we are looking for, Tom, is for that fund to continue to increase, and then we will look at that again.
Yes, so the project does include utilizing those $9 million as well as the debt issuance.
Okay. All right, further questions? We're excited.
So the conclusion and staff recommendation is to recommending award South Concho A Lift Station to Austin Engineering at $5,330,900. The Lake Nazworthy Wastewater System Improvements to McKee Utility Contractors in the amount of $25,999,100. Task order three to CDM Smith for Construction Phase Services at $1,498,906. And then recommending the fiscal year 2022/23 budget in the amount of $44,233,920. There's a lot of numbers there.
Do I have a motion for approval? Some move by Tommy, seconded by Tom. Public comment? Seeing no public comment, we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no, knows, the motion is passed 7-0. Item C is consider approving an agreement between the city of San Angelo and Angelo State University for a long-term lease of the Bligh Arena and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Sidney, welcome, and you're on.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Good morning, city manager. Sidney Walker, Civic Events Manager for the city of San Angelo. Here to discuss the Bligh Arena for a long-term lease with Angelo State University. The Bligh Arena is located right here at 4602 Quirrell Street. It's adjacent to the Coliseum. The arena is normally used as a practice facility, also for private road opens. Stock Show actually uses the Bligh Arena too as well. In the past few years, we've accumulated just minimal revenue on the facility, and it hasn't been enough revenue to put in to it, to bring it up to standards. So we've met with ASU representatives. They attended our January board meeting, and our Civic Events Advisory Board made a recommendation to look into a long-term proposal with Angelo State University. We do have Mr. Don Topliff available right now to speak upon for the ASU proposal and what they would like to see happen with the Bligh Arena and their ASU rodeo program.
Could you talk about what the dollar amount of the revenue is over the past?
Yes, ma'am.
Just so we're aware.
So in the past three years, in FY '22, we only accumulated $3,195, and FY '21, it was $5,685. And then fiscal year '20, it was only $1,800.
And those funds were spent on what?
Those funds, we actually didn't spend any funds on our, on the facility. So we do need to, we haven't accumulated enough revenue to be able to put back into the facility to maintain it. So that revenue was just generated, but it did not, we did not put it back into the facility.
Just goes back into the line item on their revenue source for civic events.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, if you all have any questions about the indoor arena, please let me know, but I'll go ahead and let Mr. Don, Dr. Don Topliff.
Yes, Harry.
Just make a comment. Probably four or five years ago, we went out, I went out with Sid and a couple of other city employees, and we looted the Bligh Arena. And at that point in time, I said to Sid, we've got to find somebody to help with this. I said, because more than likely, we're never going to find enough money in the budget to bring this, this particular arena back up to standard. So I applaud you, this partnership with ASU, because I think it's, it's a win-win situation for both of us.
Yes, sir, I agree. Dr. Don Topliff, he'll speak on behalf of Angelo State University and discuss more about the rodeo program. Thank y'all.
Thank you, and good morning, council members. We appreciate the time to visit with you about this. My name is Don Topliff. I'm the Provost and Vice President, Vice President for Academic Affairs and Chief Academic Officer at Angelo State University. So we're here this morning to seek permission from the council for, to negotiate a long-term lease for the Bligh Arena. Give you a little bit of background information. I can tell you, and no pun intended, that we didn't make a spur-of-the-moment decision on this, on this project. This is something that we've been talking about for a number of years. We probably would have already done this had it not been for COVID. We were just about in a position to do this, and then COVID hit, and obviously, that turned the entire world upside down, ours included. We plan to kick off the ASU rodeo program again. It was in existence previously, but was, has gone dormant for a number of years. We plan to kick it off with the fall of 2023, fall semester. And in fact, we intend to make an announcement of this during the Angelo, the San Angelo Rodeo on April 1st, to announce that we are beginning a rodeo program back at Angelo State University. Myself and another community member actually went to Odessa two weeks ago, to Odessa College's rodeo, and in a meeting with the southwestern region rodeo coaches, we announced that we intend to rejoin the National Intercollegiate Rodeo Association and have a rodeo team. So students that will compete in this program will represent the university in NIRA, National Intercollegiate Rodeo Association, rodeos throughout the southwestern region, which encompasses most of Texas, part of New, and part of New Mexico. This program, we believe, will serve not only ASU, but the community as well by recruiting and retaining premier students, not only from the Concho Valley, but really from around So our request is, is to negotiate a long-term lease of the Bligh Arena through the city of San Angelo. I can tell you that the Texas Tech University System Board of Regents has authorized, the president and myself, to negotiate that lease, so we've run that through all of, all of the people at, on the Board of Regents. And obviously, this lease will have to be involved, city attorneys as well as Texas Tech University System attorneys. We believe that this, well, we know that this arena will provide a practice venue for our students as well as a facility to board their horses. One of the things, as a former rodeo competitor at Kansas State University, I can tell you that having the ability for students to board their horses on a university leased facility is really important in attracting the kind of students that we want for this. We'll also have livestock that we use for practices, calves, steers, and rough stock will be housed on the premises. But most importantly, over the years, over a significant number of years, we're going to make improvements to the Bligh Arena that will restore this property to the high standard that it deserves, being adjacent to the Foster Coliseum. We intend to do this in a series of phases. Year one, and I understand that June to August is not a full year, I can count, that's only three months. However, the, the reason that we put that there is because, to begin in the fall, we've got some, some things that we've got to do to that facility right off the bat to make it usable for our, for our students. The first of those is conversion of some of the 10-by-10 pens that are there currently to 10-by-20 pens, which be easily done. We've already looked at that. The arena dirt work is going to have to be taken care of. If you've not been there, the edges of the arena are approximately a foot higher than the center. It's going to take some serious dirt work to get that fixed. And then remediation of drainage around the building. We understand it doesn't rain often here, but when it does rain, our experience in, in being out there when it has rained is that there's some serious drainage issues right around the building that will need to be addressed. We'll also do an assessment of the lighting, the water wells, and the plumbing, and of course, we'll need to place temporary ADA-compliant toilet facilities there, as the toilet facilities on the premises are not usable at the moment. And then we'll do a general cleanup of the surrounding area. We have, already have a donor that is, is giving us the money to take care of Phase One, so that's, that's already in the bank. Phase Two will be, begin with painting of the pipe fencing. I don't know if you're aware, but there's about, by my estimation, about 25,000 linear feet of pipe in that facility. It's going to take some serious labor and, and time to paint all that pipe, but it needs to be done. We'll also look to replace the current lighting fixtures with LED-type lighting fixtures, and also work on all of those exterior doors that need, are needed in repair. We'll also do some repair to the bucking chutes so that we can have practice facilities for rough stock riders. We'll also do more further inspection and remediation of the arena floor. I don't know if you're aware of this, but there's actually a science to that, and, and we know people that, that, and I know people that, that know how to do that. We need to make that as safe as we can, not only for the, the students, but for their, their livestock as well. We'll do renovation of the restroom facilities that are there, and bring those up to ADA standards, and then obviously, we'll purchase and lease both timed event and rough stock.
Phase Two, what's the timeframe on Phase Two?
We think about a year. So in Year Three, then, our, our intention is to repair the exterior skin of the building. From, from my look at it, it looks like nothing's been done to the exterior skin of that building since it was first built. I could be wrong about that, I don't know, but certainly, there's some repairs needed. We also intend to paint the exterior and interior of the building and repair the existing seating that's in the grandstands there to meet ADA compliance. They certainly do not at the moment. We'll also be exploring the building of additional stalling facilities for our students' horses, and obviously, continuation of the lease and the purchase for timed event and rough stock.
When we talk about Year One, Year Two, and Year Three, at what point is, will the facility be usable?
It'll be usable right after the first year. We have to make it usable if we're going to start the rodeo program this fall. Cosmetically, it's not going to be done in Year One. Year One is simply to bring the facility... Year One is simply to bring the facility up to the standards where we can safely allow our students to utilize it. So, beyond the impact on ASU, I think it's, this investment's gonna have substantial benefit to the San Angelo community. This program will attract and retain students that will contribute financially to the community through the purchase of feed, bedding, livestock equipment, equipment for their horses. And these students will also rent housing, buy food. And if you've not paid attention to the vehicles that it takes to run up and down the road, these things use a lot of fuel, so there'll be a significant dollar impact from that. These students will also benefit the community at large, both while they're in the program and potentially after graduation. I'd point out to you that in Stevenville, Texas, Tarleton State University, which has a nationally renowned rodeo program, if you look at the impact that that has had on the surrounding area, it is amazing. The number of ranches that are in the PBR bucking bull generation, the number of world champion cowboys that have made Tarleton, made Stevenville their home, it has had a tremendous impact to that community, and we think that the same can happen here in San Angelo. So, our request is that the City Council approve ASU to negotiate a lease for the Bligh Arena through the City of San Angelo, and we'd like to do that by June 1. And at that, I'll answer any other questions that you might have.
You're our expert on council, I think, about the rodeo.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Yeah, it'll cost you, but go ahead.
So, I've spoken, and Cooper Hogs talked to it. I haven't talked to Dr. Topliff, Dr. Hawkins. But anyway, a kind of a subpart of the back is, in college rodeo, junior colleges, lots of teams. But when you get to four-year academic programs, there's not very many. They need a feeder program to come into. And I don't know if I'm getting it right, correct me if I'm wrong, but by starting this here, we bring in a lot of those upper academic students that are continuing their college education. They're not there. So, these are the students you wanna get. It's the program you want. As Dr. Topliff said, if you can find one that doesn't have a double cab doodling, a 34-foot six-load slant trailer, it's not common.
What does that look like?
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of revenue. The only concern I have seen with this, and this is just a pre-discussion, is there's times the Stock Show and Rodeo need that facility during rope and fiesta and rodeo. And I'm sure they've got facilities worked out to where they can transfer things around. But this whole thing just looks perfect. Needs to roll forward. I could see no reason not for this to go through.
Well, certainly, we would be working with Justin and the rodeo to make sure that we allow that to happen.
Other questions or comments from council members? If not, then, Tom, do you wanna make a...
Moved to approval is presented.
Okay, with all of that, any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All of those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no, noes. Motion is approved, seven to zero.
Dr. Topliff, you had the mayor, when you said K-State, it was...
I know, I wasn't gonna bring that up again, because K-State...
She remained very calm when you just casually threw out there K-State. But I wanna give the mayor some limelight for K-State.
Thank you. We keep talking about Kansas State, so I'm proud to represent Kansas State.
So, I understood, Dr. Topliff, your math, July to August is one year, because that's one year in the life of a roping calf that you can use it. So, I understand your math there. I understand that.
Perfect. Okay, so, we will go to Item D. Consideration of MOU between the City of San Angelo and the San Angelo Museum of Fine Arts for the use of space in the Chase State Office Building for curatorial storage and care facilities shared with Fort Concho, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents. And Bob, you're on.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Council. As they say in the bureaucratic world, this is a win-win for both the art museum and the fort. Both of us need quality storage space. Both of us need quality curatorial and repair space. And right now, with their roof situation, they desperately need any space at all. There's 8,000 square feet unused that has real no other financial or office purpose in the Chase State Office Building. And we believe that this MOU crafted over time, funded by the art museum, will benefit both the art museum and the fort. The 40-year tenure of the partnership is to ensure that they, the art museum, can acquire and attract funding for a project that has a permanency. And I can assure you, I won't be here in 40 years, but I'm sure that this will benefit the fort and the art museum for generations to come. Questions?
Questions for Bob? I think it's a great utilization of the State Office Building, and we know the museum is needing it. But we also know the museum will make great use of it and have already done some fundraising.
They do. They have enough funding for Phase One. And of course, right now, their operations is in our quartermaster building. So, we're always, we're always helpful to orphans. And we are happy to have them as part of our team. And Alex Freeman of the art museum is here if you have any specific questions. And we could certainly come back at a later date and give you a progress report.
Any questions? Everybody good?
Moved approval, Mayor.
Moved approval by Tommy, seconded by Larry. Any public comment concerning this item? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Get her done. Item E, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance to revoke SP 94-22, which was replaced by the approval of a new conditional use, CU 22-06, allowing additional outdoor storage and display on a property being 4.71 acres located at 2701 Southwest Boulevard. John, you're on.
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. You may recall this, a while back, early 2022, Tractor Supply came and wanted to revise the rules on their property to allow some additional outdoor storage. That was ultimately approved with conditional use 2206. One of the conditions of that was that the existing special permit on that property that was from 1994 be revoked or basically go away. The problem with that is it affected the adjacent shopping center as well. And so, we needed the approval of both property owners, not just Tractor Supply. And so, it's taken a while for them to get that lined up, but that's finally gotten lined up. So, here we're ready to move this forward. And so, again, this is basically a revocation of that special permit from 1994. I'm not gonna read through all of these. These are just a couple of slides you saw with that conditional use. This is the new concept plan that was approved by you all back when that conditional use was approved. And just a reminder, normally, conditional uses are approved by the Planning Commission. They actually denied that, and so it came to you on appeal. But then you all reversed the Planning Commission to approve that concept of the conditional use with some additional changes, I think, to address some of the concerns that came up at the Planning Commission. So, again, I think I've described most of this already. But basically, this comes to you with the recommendation of staff to revoke that 1994 special use so that the new conditional use can go into effect.
Jason, property owner is supportive of this?
That's correct, yes. We've got their signature on the application to allow this to move forward.
Larry, it's in your district. Do you have any questions or comments you'd like to make?
Do you have any responses from those residences that are somewhat... They're not real close by any stretch of imagination. But I wonder if you had any comments from them or requested any comments from them?
No, but in this case, because the conditional use was, we had notified during the conditional use process for this, since it's just revoking that previous one that was addressed back in April, we did not send out additional notices for this revocation.
Can you go back to that one map that has an area in purple? Is that the limit... No, you're on the next one.
Went too far.
Is the purple area the limitation area for their, their storage out there? Or does it expand beyond that?
Yes, it should be limited to that purple area. In fact, that was one of the back and forth that happened. It was originally planned to be a bit bigger, and so, part of the compromise was scaling that back to a smaller area.
Thank you.
Okay, Karen?
Can you confirm for us that the, the folks in the neighborhood were not notified because they're outside the 200-foot notification zone? Is that correct or incorrect?
No, for this revocation, it's just a condition of the original conditional use. There's no notices required.
Not a zoning change. Other questions or comments? All right, Larry, would you like to make a motion for approval? Okay, thank you for that. Can you just second it? Any public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no, noes, this. Item E is approved, seven to zero. We will now move into closed session. Executive session on the provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, exceptions to requirement that meetings be open under the following sections. Section 551.087, Business Prospect Negotiations Regarding, One, Project New Way; Two, Project Monet; Three, Skyline Aviation; and Four, Occupational Training Facility at Mathis Field. We will move into closed session. We'll take a 10-minute break, and we'll meet you all upstairs through the closed session. How's that? And we will be calling this meeting back to order at 11:34 a.m. on March 7. There are no announcements to be made from executive session. So, we will consider approving various board nominations, which are Economic Development Corporation, Max Puelo, play... How do you say that?
Max Puelo?
Puelo. SMD III to third term, Ruben Caballos, SMD IV to first full term, Stephen Mahafee, SMD V to first term, and Farah Gomez to first full term, all ending February 2025. Do I have a motion to approve these appointments as presented today? So, moved by Tom, seconded by Tommy. Any public comment on any of these candidates? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. We'll now ask for announcements and consideration of future agenda items. Are there any? Yes, sir. Yes.
Daniel, y'all have to maybe work with some of our public safety folks. But to bring this back to us in whatever form, either we give you direction or we take a vote, or whatever it needs to be, so that maybe we can clarify this further for citizens that, that need the clarification. So, I would ask for that. It's some, some future agenda.
Well, and don't you think, Tommy, that we should look at it as one, one issue is residential street? Others are parks or parkland?
I would defer to our legal folk, because I think there are some state statutes that become involved in other things too. So, y'all can give us the full presentation.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to speak on all of that right now.
No, I don't, we don't need, yeah.
There are some ways that you can do some approvals, but I do believe it's only residential streets allowed in the statute. But again, when we come back, I'll have all those details for you.
Okay. All right, anything else? Anybody? Then I'm gonna ask for a motion for adjournment.
Moved.
Okay, moved and seconded and voted on.
Aye. Aye.
Zero, we're done.